Second. All those in favor, I oppose. Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for February 3rd, 2020. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Reynolds and Katie? And then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones. Thank you very much, that was wonderful. Dr. Hatter, it looks like we have Brookside in the house today.
We do, we do. What an exciting presentation. Boys and girls, I am so, we are all so excited to hear everything that you have to say about your East Team Learning and the playground design that you all did. Parents, thank you so much for bringing your children out to join us in the meeting. It really means so much to us to have our students as part of our Board of Education meeting. So I know it's not the easiest thing on a Monday evening to bring your family out, but we really do appreciate you doing that. So, East Team has been such a wonderful part of our instructional program here in the Yorktown Central School District. And as you also know, our elementary schools have recently undergone either additions or the planning for additions to each of their playgrounds, and Brookside School is no different. And I was so happy to hear that we used the concept of East Team and engineering and all the principles of design thinking as part of the playground development. So it wasn't just a facilities project, but we turned this into instructional unit of study, and that's absolutely tremendous. So, Mrs. Amerling, I thank you for that, I thank your staff here this evening for all of that, and I will turn the program over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Ms. Carbone, Mr. Mignani, Mrs. O'Shea, Mr. Cole, and Board Trustees. Thank you for having us here, we are truly excited. For the past two years, Brookside has been planning for new playgrounds for our kindergarten and first grade students, and adding some new play pieces for our second and third grade students. We've worked hard to help raise funds for this project through PCA-sponsored fundraisers, particularly the fun runs, where our parents and families have greatly contributed. We're also very fortunate and thankful to the generous support from the Jacobson family and Senator Harkum's office. It was one thing to work on gaining the resources to help finance a large endeavor like this, but it's quite another process to determine the play equipment that our students would enjoy and serve them best. We developed a playground committee that included teachers from all grade levels, many of our teaching assistants, physical education teachers, physical and occupational therapists, the facilities department, administrators, and parents. But some of the best information and thinking came from our very own students. We are grateful to the work of Mrs. Murphy, Mr. Brooks, Mrs. Breen, and Mrs. Angelini that they did with some of our students, so that we are confident that we selected equipment that will truly work for everyone. So now, I would like to introduce Mrs. Murphy, one of our new teachers at Brookside in the second grade, who will take over and discuss the work that was done with the students.
Thank you all so much for coming this evening. We would like to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to present at tonight's meeting. I would personally like to thank the team who I'm lucky enough to work with every day, Charlie Brooks and Diane Angelini. And a special thank you to Christine Breen, who allowed the use of the East Team Lab and the resources throughout the unit. So, in the beginning of the school year, Brookside held a fundraiser for a new K-1 playground. Many of our students have younger siblings in kindergarten, and were wondering what type of playground the K-1 student would like. This was the basis behind our project, it developed through student inquiry. Each student really showcased an empathetic component to the E-Team acronym, really taking into consideration what the younger students would enjoy. We all had so much fun working on this project. Thank you again for your time, and now I will turn it over to the students.
As a school, we raised money from the fun run to build a new K-31 playground. As a class, we wondered what kind of playground the younger kids would enjoy. We, as second graders, know we can't build a real playground, but we should have fun using our imaginations, creating the East Team structures you see on display.
This project has many steps. We first looked at different kinds of playgrounds in the science lab. Next, we identified the three major parts of the playground, the swings, the slides, and the climbing areas. Then, we researched those areas on the Chromebooks. We created a survey to collect data from Mr. G.'s kindergarten class. Last, we used the data to design our blueprints.
From the blueprints, we then started to create our structures. We spent time in the East Team Lab using a variety of materials and tools. One of our favorite tools to use was a 3D pen. As we worked, we made improvements to our playground designs.
This East Team project really showed us what teamwork is all about. We didn't always agree, but we did compromise with one another. We needed to listen, share, and respect each other's ideas. Our class is proud of our hard work we put into this project. We hope you like seeing us in our playgrounds.
When the students were in the East Team Lab, not only did they use arts and crafts materials to create their playground structures, but we also introduced them to green screen technology. We have an app called the Do Ink app, which was used to put them inside of or next to their playground structures. If you listen, it's a little hard to hear, hopefully in the future maybe we'll get a microphone so it works a little better, but if you listen, you'll hear them describe their playground projects.
Welcome to our Earth-based Playground. The thing is a mountain. Our maze has one way in and one way out. The swing set has many different swings where you can choose. We hope you will have fun on our team. Our team built an castle playground. The long slide is one of the most involved. We have four different flags flying on the top of our castle. There is a keypad where you press a button to bring down the rubber. The safety net on our castle protects its own falling. You can check out a rubble, you can climb to the cabin. Be careful when you climb. When did you learn to slide down the bullet side? Use the lap to come up to the top. We think that this will not fall off. Make sure no one is in the bullet area before you slide down. Make sure you have one.
The students had the most amazing time working on this project. We sincerely appreciate the playground committee for taking some of the students' playgrounds ideas and implementing them into the playground that will be built in the spring. This includes the double slide, the climbing area, an orb rocker, and a swing set, including an ADA swing. The East Team projects are on display, if you would like to get a better look and ask the students any questions that you'd like. Thank you again so much.
So, please.
So, boys and girls, that was phenomenal. That was absolutely amazing. Very, very well done. So there were a few things that I observed. First of all, you're amazing readers, absolutely amazing readers, you're amazing speakers. It's not easy to stand in front of a microphone and talk in front of a group of people and a whole audience. You did such a great job sharing your part with the Board of Education and with our community. And you'll be on TV also, so watch for yourselves on TV as well, you'll be on our channel. You're great, you're such great designers, your imaginations are amazing, and I'm so glad that this project allowed you to really carry out your creativity. It was absolutely beautiful. You used the 3D printer pens, we're so excited that you used it. How many of you enjoyed using the 3D printer pens? Me too, I love that. I am so proud of you using that wonderful technology. The part I think that I was most impressed by is you went down to the kindergartners and you surveyed what they wanted in a playground, because you know that it's going to be their school next year and the year after that and after that. I was so happy that you took the time to listen to what the kindergartners wanted. That's such a special thing, boys and girls, I hope you never lose that. I am so, so proud of you. Mrs. Breen, thank you for introducing so many wonderful technologies to our district. Ms. Murray, Ms. Amerling, Mr. Cicerini, thank you so much. This has been such a wonderful and rewarding good news. You took a facilities project and you turned it into a wonderful unit of study for our students. I am so impressed and I'm so proud. Boys and girls, well done, well done. So, at this point in the evening, we still have a long meeting ahead of us, and I know you all have young ones with bedtimes, so you're welcome to stay for the budget presentation, it's going to be wonderful. We're talking about debt service and transportation for next year. Or you could take the opportunity of this very brief recess to excuse yourselves and have a great evening. Thank you so much for coming out, parents.
Thank you. Okay, we are up to public comment, anybody wishing to speak on agenda-related items? Okay, up to superintendent's report. Dr. Hatter, first I got to tell you, those kids are phenomenal, they are so, so cute.
Yes. Some amazing things happening. We had our egg drop, Humpty Dumpty survived at Mohansik as part of our kindergartners' unit of study. That was absolutely wonderful that we took our operations and maintenance truck raised it 17 feet in the air while our kindergarten student engineers designed protective casings for Humpty Dumpty. So I'm proud to report Humpty Dumpty survived the falls and our students are wonderful engineers. This Brookside presentation was just another example of the wonderful work that's happening in the East Team fields. Our Junior Science Research Fair was held this past Wednesday, participation has grown, the projects were absolutely amazing. We have 10 seats going forward to the Tri-County Science Fair with a hope for competing on the international level at Broadcom Masters. Our 2020-2021 school calendar was approved by the Board of Education at their last meeting, that is now posted to our website, you may access the calendar that way. We have some upcoming presentations. On February 10th, we'll hear a presentation about increasing our Wi-Fi and broadband access throughout the district, and at some point in March, we'll hear from Dr. Saversky about the study that he has conducted, the demographic and enrollment study that he has conducted in the district. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Sigvartson, she's our district treasurer, to the podium to give the next presentation in the series of budget presentations in preparation of the 2020-2021 budget. Tonight's presentation is about debt service and transportation, and without further ado, Ms. Sigvartson, I turn it over to you.
Put it close to your mouth.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Sigvartson, I'm the treasurer of the Yorktown Central School District. Tonight is our third presentation in a seven-part budget series. In the following slides, we will discuss the status of the district's debt and transportation services. This chart represents annual total debt service payments, including related interest costs on our outstanding obligations. At this point, the bond issued in support of the 2006 voter authorization represent the entirety of our capital indebtedness. As the chart indicates, our debt service costs will remain fairly constant for the next four years at a level of approximately $3.7 million annually. After that four-year period, the outstanding debt begins to mature in six annual phases, phasing out completely after the 2028-29 school year. Our capital reserve fund, established by the voters in May of 2017, will again be the financial vehicle we use to fund capital projects for the 2021 year. As a reminder, the voters approved a capital reserve not to exceed $12 million in total funding for a period not to exceed 10 years. The reserve has two significant benefits to taxpayers. It provides a source of funding for building and facility improvements without the need to further raise taxes, and eliminates the interest expense on money that would otherwise be borrowed. To date, we have fully funded the reserve to the maximum level of $12 million. Okay, to continue. The first of the projects under the reserve structure were completed this past summer. These projects include air conditioning in the high school on the second floor, replacing the primary underground electrical transmission line on the high school/middle school campus, replacing the middle school cooling tower, a component of the central air conditioning system, replacing floors, ceilings, and lights in the Cronpon School, and replacing classroom door hardware and wire glazing in the Brookside School. The second group of projects under the reserve structure are scheduled to begin the summer of 2020, and include air conditioning in the gymnasium of the middle school, air conditioning in the gymnasiums and cafeterias of the high school, and our three, oh, sorry, and our three elementary schools, renovations to the high school gymnasium, Mohansik School's nurses' suite, and Brookside School's cafeteria, as well as upgrades to the high school's bleachers and concession stand at the turf field. This is the line-by-line cost estimate for debt service in the budget. As the bonds issued in support of the 2006 authorization continue to be paid down, we can expect costs to remain constant for the next four years and then dramatically decline over the next six years. For the 2020-21 school year, total debt service costs will remain virtually unchanged. Next, we'll discuss transportation. The Yorktown Central School District employs a four-tier bus system. That is to say, we have four distinct cycles to our daily runs. In the mornings, the high school students are transported first, then the middle school students, Cronpon School, and last, the two K-3 schools, Brookside and Mohansik. In the afternoons, for dismissal, the same cycle takes place. The four-tier cycle takes just over three hours to complete. We utilize 71 vehicles of varying sizes to provide this service in 2020-21. The district provides home-to-school transportation to private schools for Yorktown Central School District residents within the distance requirements established by the State Education Department. We also provide transportation services to students attending special education programs outside of our district boundaries. Our buses travel more than a half million miles each year, consuming more than 50,000 gallons of fuel. Our contracted provider is Baumann &amp; Sons Bus Company and is under contract until the 2023-24 school year. We expect total transportation costs to increase by just over $257,000. Of this total increase, only approximately $145,000 is related to contract increases. Our rate of contracted increase for 2020-21 is based on either inflation or 3%, whichever is lower. As such, the rate of inflation will be used for 2020-21. The remaining increase in contracted costs is related to the inclusion of three contingent buses for potential increases in enrollment or additional out-of-district special education placements. We have also included an increase in equipment costs to build an
Mike?
Um, thank you, Alicia. Can, can you talk a little bit about our debt service and have we been able to do any refinancing lately to try to cut down on our costs?
Uh, yeah, we actually did a refinance in May of 2019, and that reduced our costs in interest significantly.
Okay.
Pete?
Sure. With, um, you budgeted roughly $250 a gallon for diesel fuel, um, coming up. Looks like we spent about $235 a gallon roughly this year. Is that, I guess, how do you come about, uh, budgeting and picking a number for that?
So, we're looking at the, um, we're looking at the current structure that obviously we use this year and working off of a state contract. So, we typically plan for the current pricing plus a percentage as a contingency, which is what this is. The difference between what we're paying now and what we've budgeted is, in essence, a contingency between price fluctuations from now until the next school year.
Alicia, can you, um, explain a little bit more about the capital reserve and how that does save taxpayers money?
Sure. Um, so, in order to fund those projects, had we not had the capital reserve, we would have had to issue bonds, which of course come with interest costs. So, by using the capital reserve, we save thousands of dollars by not incurring those interest costs.
Terrific. Lisa?
I'm good, thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thanks.
Mike?
Can you just talk a little bit about contingency buses? Like, how would we employ those exactly?
Take this one, Tom?
So, each year, obviously, we plan and, um, we put resources in place to be able to react to enrollment changes and/or, uh, students who are being placed out of district that weren't initially planned for in the budget. We don't anticipate to use three buses through all four, uh, cycles or tiers that have been presented here tonight. To do that, a single bus would cost about $85,000. We do expect, though, that at some point mid-year or at some point after the beginning of the school year, some things will change and we'll have to adapt to them, whether it's inserting a bus into a particular tier of runs, uh, because of a, a cluster of new students in a neighborhood we didn't plan on or so forth. It'd be very rare that we'd have to employ all three new buses before the beginning of the school year.
Just a kind of a follow-up then. Would that maybe include a run that had a smaller bus needing a bigger bus, or are we talking about strictly adding an entire bus?
It could be either one. So, um, it's, it's quite a fine dance. You know, the, the routes that are calculated that we use are based on the, the TransFinder uh, routing system. It's a software package, and it's fine-tuned by one of the best directors in the business, our Patty Sauber, who runs the transportation department. Um, and we have an extremely efficient package of routing. But anything can change. Uh, clusters at bus stops can change. Students with special needs can change. A safety issue can crop up with regard to bus stops or so forth. Uh, there's any variety of things that we'd have to react to that we might have to deploy a new bus for.
Pete?
This is probably a question that comes up every year. We have a four-tier bus system, and have we, do we continue to look at other ways to perhaps update that, change that, or?
Sure. The, the, um, the four-tier bus system has been in place for as long as I've been here, which is now, uh, 20 years, and it was in place before then. To cut tiers out of the system, say to, to make it three tiers or something of that nature, is a significant expense. Even though our aid ratio is roughly 50 cents on the dollar, the increase in cost would be substantial. Uh, having our buses owned in-house is another extremely expensive proposition. It can be done, but there's a great deal of planning. We'd have to go through some kind of an acquisition or construction of a facility, and then the capital cost of purchasing all the vehicles and so forth. So, we do continue to look at them. Dr. Hatter, perhaps you can expand on some of the other things we've looked at this recently?
As part of our education planning committee, we actually looked at a three-tier bus system, and we determined that the infrastructure upgrades that would have to be made to the high school-middle school campus to accommodate all of that traffic within a similar timeframe would be north of about $2 million. So, it was a substantial one-time, and then these substantial, um, annual costs would result in not only increased expenditures for more buses on the road at one time, and the first hour of that bus is where a lot of the costs or the bulk of the costs are incurred, but also we would, we would have buses that were in 100% capacity. So, we may have 75% or, or 60% capacity on, on those buses. So, those were things that all came into the calculus of the education planning committee as we reviewed a three-tier system, because it, a three-tier system would give us a lot more flexibility, and there would be tremendous benefits to us in terms of school start times and some other opportunities for us as a district. But the one-time upfront cost to upgrade our facility infrastructure and then the recurring costs were just too substantial for us to even get out of the gate. And I'll share, Cheryl, you mentioned a question about the cost of the monitors. So, the cost of the monitors currently, we spent about $500,000 or so annually on the 19 bus monitors. If we were to scale that to a 71 bus fleet, we'd be looking at about $2 million annually in monitors. So, the district took, I believe, the more prudent route, and we outfitted our buses with cameras. We have multiple angles on each of those cameras. We have one in the rear, one in the front, one that can catch the, um, parent-driver interactions. They're all equipped with audio. Um, they don't take sick days, and they're always, uh, available. Now, we do have its technology, so there are times where we will receive some concerns and the cameras aren't working, and that's just the reality of technology. But by and large, 99% of the time, 95% of the time, when we need the cameras, they're there, and they've been really, really valuable to us.
Right. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna follow up on that. Can you explain how they've saved us, what, what their benefit is, because we're, again, investing in them? So, what is the benefit to having them besides not having monitors?
We invest substantial resources toward our character education program, ensuring that students are being responsible citizens and interacting with each other appropriately. That's very important to us as a school district. The bus becomes time that's a little less structured, it's a little less unattended. So, there are concerns. There are behavioral concerns, violations of the code of conduct that are brought to our attention, even language, just inappropriate language to be used in an educational setting. And the bus is an extension of the educational setting. Our code of conduct extends to the bus and to off-campus, school-sponsored trips. So, as complaints come in and as concerns are raised, our administrators are able to go back in time and look at exactly what transpired on the bus. They have audio, they have video, they have multiple angles of the video. It's not a perfect system, but it has really helped with the investigations to curtail some of the inappropriate behaviors that can occur on the bus. The other part of this is with, especially our younger students, five- and six-year-olds don't always have, and as a parent of a six-year-old, they don't always have the best, um, ability to remember chronologically what happened and when it happened and, and give you timestamps. So, having the footage is really, really valuable to us to go back. And, and there are some students who will share some behavior with us, and the videos have given us just a tremendous opportunity to investigate those concerns.
Jackie, can I just follow up on that?
Sure.
So, I appreciate the, um, the benefit of the camera and the investigation of an incident after it occurred, but the monitors would help with something as it's occurring, right? So, how does a camera replace a monitor in that way?
So, it doesn't replace a monitor. However, in my experience, the monitors have, um, have their shortcomings as well in terms of requiring a seat, so limiting occupancy, um, sitting in a certain seat and not seeing everything, because we have, a monitor has two eyes, and they'll see whatever they can see, and, and they'll hear whatever they can hear in a loud bus. We have four cameras. We can, and also with the cameras, if a child gets off at a stop early in the school year, it may happen, where a child gets off at the wrong stop, we have video footage detailing exactly where the child was disembarking the bus. So, we, it cuts both ways, but again, the monitor may not be there on that given day. The monitor may be sick, the monitor may be on a leave, the monitor may change jobs, and we have somebody else who doesn't know the children as well and doesn't know the tendencies of the bus. The cameras are there. And so, while in the moment, uh, a monitor may, if they see it, the monitor has more benefit, if they see it.
Thank you. Um, did anybody else have any other questions? Um, I just, when we talked about, the one question we talked about having refinanced our debt, how much money have we roughly saved by refinancing the debt?
Um, so, over the life of the bond, we'll save tens of thousands of dollars. Um, in the current year, we've experienced about a $40,000 savings in interest costs.
Terrific. Okay. Nothing else? We're good? Alicia, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to come back anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She can present anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good night, you.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 27th meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, can I have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies and regulations, 1240 Visitors to the School and its Regulation, 4821 Ceremonies, Holiday Displays and Observances, and 5314 Corporal Punishment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Some personnel. Um, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved under certified personnel. We have some appointments. We have coaches and co-curriculars. We have coach appointments, um, and we have volunteer coach appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, business. A motion to accept the early termination of the Yorktown Youth Soccer Club's lease of the field at the French Hill School effective March 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, whereas the Board of Education desires to piggyback off a contract from another municipality, the town of Islip, in accordance with the General Municipal Law, Section 10316, for the purpose of purchase and installation of playground play equipment and site amenities for the Brookside Elementary School, and whereas the contract was bid in a manner consistent with Section 103 of the General Municipal Law and included a provision for participation in this bid by other New York state entities, which include school districts, therefore be resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Yorktown Central School District to participate in the playground play equipment and site amenities bid of the town of Islip by piggybacking onto the contract with American recreational products of the same terms and conditions as the town of Islip during the period of the time the bid is in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Tom, could you just explain what that means by the piggybacking?
Sure. The town of Islip, uh, entered into a contract with the provider of playground equipment that we would like to utilize, and in their bid specifications, they're allowing other municipalities and school districts in the state of New York to be able to participate at the same pricing that was provided to Islip. And in order to do that, we have to pass this resolution that says this board formally agrees to, uh, accept their pricing. And the other thing it does is it gives us the same type of protections and insurance and indemnification that Islip received from the, uh, from the provider as well.
And in our research, that pricing was very beneficial and advantageous to the district to be able to piggyback on that pricing, so that's another benefit to us.
And if we hadn't, we would have had to gone out to bid because of the price of it?
We would have had to have bid this, yes, and it would have been time-consuming and somewhat expensive. There is a cost to bidding, advertising and legal expense and so forth. So, it was, it's productive and efficient for us.
Terrific. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. A motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion to approve the following allowance dispersment for MDS HVAC Inc., uh, was providing materials and labor to electrically connect a split-air unit in the high school.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. Yorktown High School, $16 from New York Life Year Cause Employee Match Program. Yorktown High School Athletics, $12,903.84 from the Huskers Club for the spring training varsity baseball trip. At Brookside, $1,300 from the Brookside PTA for a field trip to the Hudson River Museum and a field trip to the Maritime Aquarium. And to the district, one Kodak EasyShare DX7440 digital camera and a CX600 printer station, printer dock station from Betty Amico.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're up to board comments. Pete?
Another wonderful night with children.
Mike?
Yeah, it was really great to see, uh, e-steam in full effect, really covering all components, getting something, um, that, you know, would have just been a non-student event. Having them participate in it really brings it to life, so I thought that was fantastic. Thank you.
Cheryl?
Uh, yeah, I agree with everyone's comments, and thank you to Alicia for coming tonight and providing a very detailed and thorough overview of this part of the budget presentation.
Alicia?
Yeah, same. I just, I love the way, um, the teachers in our district incorporate every single thing into the classroom, even a realistic thing that could really be boring, designing the playground and purchasing the playground and talking about the piggybacking of the contract and, but they turned it into something that was amazing for the kids and had them be a part of it so they can watch it, um, get developed. And I love that the little members were like the big members and asking the kindergarteners, what do you want on your playground? So, they got to be the big kid. It was, it was very cool. I loved the whole interaction.
Yeah, I totally agree. I love that they have ownership of their playground now. Now, when they look at it, they know they had a part of it, so I think that's really awesome. And I learned something very important. The kids actually made a decision factor, were a deciding factor in swing sets, which I think, I think that was a very valuable lesson for everybody all around, because that's what they really wanted. So, that's awesome. I love having them come, so thank you very much. Alicia, thank you. Uh, Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything? All right. Can I have a, oh, public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? All right. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night.
Good night.